I make a motion that Cindy Jones, the appointed treasurer of the town of Hamilton, we adopt Resolution 09-20.
Any discussion from the board? Yes, Mr. Mark.
I'd just like to restate my reservations about having one pair of eyes on something as important as our bank accounts. I think that comparisons to Kristin Chesnut are unfair to our current staff and that's not why, basically just in general, I feel like it's a good idea to have two pair of eyes on these things. And having a treasurer who's separate from our finance officer is the easiest way to do that, I think, and the most appropriate. So I'm going against this matter of opinion.
Anything else from the board?
So we should have a lot more eyes, yes. So we have the town administrators with their eyes, the mayor's pair of eyes, and there'd be two trustees on the finance committee that'll be regularly going through the books. And actually, I've been going through some of them now and so has Paige and so have you. Appreciate that.
All right, anything else from the board? Yes, Mr. Mark.
I guess it's my understanding that those reviews are of the produced materials rather than the bank accounts themselves, bank statements.
That's what we're, yeah, that's what we're looking at. It'll be bank statements.
Yeah, and I would correct that because, yes, lots of people can review the bank statements.
That's how Kristin Chesnut got away with ripping off the towns because the finance committee at that time did no review of bank statements. I couldn't believe it when they told me they'd never looked at a single bank statement because that's like a fundamental part of the job. And that's why committees need to have their duties specified so they know what they need to get done.
Okay. All right, anything else from the board?
Dave?
Yes.
Well, since I've been on the council, I've served the finance committee for quite some time. And we are reviewing each of the invoices, those types of things. You know, every, every council meeting when you approve dispersments, we do that. We've also been meeting in advance of the meeting to answer any questions we might have for Cindy above what we're seeing. So there's been quite a bit of detail. We have not looked at the bank statements themselves. We look at the reconciled bank statements. But I do miss having Ross King serving the way he had served. I think that was a good thing for the town. But I think whoever's serving on the finance committee, when we get to the members here, it's really important that those people are willing to spend the time that it takes to do that. And I think I'm happy with that as an extra set of eyes.
Okay. Yeah.
And I think another person as treasurer would be wonderful, but I don't think anybody's going to step up to do that voluntarily. And I have taken a real serious interest in looking at the budget and asking questions of Cindy. And I came in yesterday and got copies of a general letter which I would still have to get through, and I'm going to put together a list of questions for Cindy and for Corinne. Based on that and some other questions I have, then I'll just preemptively say I'd like to be on the finance committee.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else from the board? All right, nothing, anything from the public? Yeah?
I'm Michelle Patterson, Second Street. And my apologies if this has been addressed, but a couple meetings ago, your attorney recommended against making this appointment until you work out any details where there may be differences in someone who is in an appointed position versus someone who is in a staff position. So I would hope that if you make this appointment, you at least take steps to address that based on your attorney's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Yeah, Miss Mark.
If you make this appointment, I hope you look closely at the job description and responsibilities. I think you might even be able to eliminate some of the assistance that Cindy currently has to have because Cindy has a propensity to involve herself into everybody's business. And I want to relate something that happened to me when I came into town hall on March 15th this year. I was doing business with front desk employees as to the procedure in submitting an open records request when Ms. Jones inserted herself into my conversation. She stood near at hand and started just watching us, and then when she felt she had the opportunity, she pounced. There is no law policy or job description giving Ms. Jones currently authorization to participate in the receipt of open records act requests outside of her office or interfere with members of the public lawfully doing business at town hall. On this day, Ms. Jones inserted herself into my business and obstructed my ability to communicate with a trained front desk staff, Susan Cassidy and Candy Bullock. When I objected to Ms. Jones' intrusion by asking her to return to her office and mind her own business, she proceeded to interfere with my very right to be in the building by demanding I immediately leave the facility. Upon my objection, Ms. Jones summoned a police officer, apparently to intimidate me and enforce her whim. I was not abusive, I was not profane or foul. Ms. Jones' actions seemed motivated by my, by personal animosity and in retaliation for my observation that she had no authority to insert herself into my legitimate town business and my request for her to return to her office. I reiterate that my business did not involve Ms. Jones or her department. I was later referred to Title 31's, or CRS 18, no, I'm sorry, not Title 31, but CRS 18-9-110 by Administrator Ferguson in a public records request asking what I had done wrong. And these statutes basically say that no person shall so conduct himself at or in any public building as to willfully deny any imbaty on such premises the lawful right of such imbaty to enter, to use the facilities of such public building. And then there, the other one is willfully impeding any employee in the lawful performance of their duties. Well, Cindy's actions not only impeded the staff in their performance of their core request with me, but she interfered with my lawful right to be in the building. So I think that this is something you need to be very aware of, to be very careful with, to very limit her duties, to be very specific to the treasurer's office, and keep her off the front desk because that's very distracting. And I think it's taking her away from what she's actually trained to do. So I don't know when you're going to address this issue, you know, as far as what her duty shall be and narrow that focus, but I think it would serve everybody. I'm willing to give her a chance, but I thought what happened to me was shocking and I hope it never happens again. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 09-2022, appointment of Officer Treasurer Cindy Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion passed. Next is Resolution 10-2022, appointment of Officer.
I have supplemental motion associated with this agenda.
Which agenda?
The previous one.
The three?
I'm going to, we direct staff to, I'm not sure exactly the proper way to do this, but we direct our town administrator to discuss job duties, review job duties for finance officer and treasurer with our finance officer.
Do I have a second on that?
Maybe I could clarify the motion. I think, I think what we're looking for is a new job description for the, let me put it, a new job description for the finance director that includes the responsibilities of treasurer to make sure that folks are covered. That might be another way to put it, and ask for the staff to produce the job description.
Before we get into discussion, I'd like to second, there's not, there's a floating motion with no second.
This is to address Ms. Watson's concern. And I believe that it would be appropriate to keep the two positions of finance director and treasurer distinct in the event that, for whatever reason, they need to be separated again in the future. At this point, we have a town administrator and town clerk whose job descriptions have been completed into one. So that's basically my, my motion, as, as I believe I stated it, was to have, to review the duties of treasurer and the duties of finance director, finance administrator separately.
All right, I want to make sure I have your motion correct.
The director, director of town administration.
Yeah.
To review the duties of treasurer and finance officer with our treasurer and finance officer.
So Dave, running discussion base, we have a job description for the finance officer, correct? But we don't have one, but did Ross King have a job description?
No.
Yes. It was, it was exactly the same thing as this in the statutes.
Yeah, which is pretty limited, I mean.
Oh, it's pretty extensive.
Yeah, just, you're talking about CRS type, everyone.
Right.
Yeah, I could, there is, there was posted a list of duties for the treasurer at the time, posted 12/14/21, I believe, sometime in early December. And it's pretty, just so everybody can see it. So it might be good if.
We all got copies of that?
Yeah, if you resend that in the treasurer's position as well.
And then the other thing that I would like to say is that oftentimes, there are only two people in this office, or one person in this office, because people are out for lunch or doing whatever. And the treasurer is the person who needs to come out and answer phones and do stuff like that, so there's coverage. Yes, this person.
So if I may, first, there is a specific job description that is for a finance officer. There is a job description that is a finance officer treasurer position. Those are two. Third comment that I would make is that I don't believe that it would be appropriate for the board to direct the administrator to, on how to direct a position that is, that I'm responsible for, for oversight and management. And I would also state that the situation that was presented to the board this evening from Ms. Watson happened several months ago, and I was informed several, a few, three months ago, I was informed of the situation and I've already dealt with that in, in conversation with staff. So I just want that to be clear. There are times things are brought to you, but they're brought to the board in, in a way that's extremely after the fact, and that especially when it has to do with any kind of staff issues have already been dealt with appropriately.
Yes, Mr. Mark.
It is my understanding that the board of trustees is charged with, is the highest authority in town, and we can direct our town administrator as we see fit. I don't see what's inappropriate about reviewing the job description.
Actually, under Title 31, the treasurer reports directly to the board. So that's why we're in the loop.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board?
Well, back to the member of the public's comment about our legal situation, that we really need to pay attention to where the reporting relationship is here because treasurer reports to the board, the finance director reports to the town administrator, and there can be a real glitch in that. So clearing that up is really important, and we have that in advance before we start running into problems. There is a piece also of us as board members, and a member of the public has also chastised me for doing that when I get too far into the weeds or too far involved in day-to-day activities, since that's not my job.
Yes, Mr. Mark.
I appreciate that, and I think that the motion is raised to avoid getting too close to the current position, situation.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah?
I would just, memo there, I wrote a couple, whatever it was, made forth, I attached statutory references to the treasurer position. And I think it's not impossible to do some sort of a bit of separation as to what the finance officer does that clearly comes under statute and the things that are just what the finance officer has to do, like make payroll and pay people. So I don't think it'd be that difficult to separate what the finance officer does under the administrator, their current job description, and some of these other duties that we as trustees have under our board.
Well, and I think too, that if we reconstitute personnel committee, this is something they can look at, or the finance committee, whichever way, it would be best to be reviewed. Okay. Any comments from the public? Yes, Mr. Mark.
I wasn't aware that you were actually combining or having one person fill two positions. I thought this was going to be the treasurer position, but I, I didn't attend the last meeting, so I'm not privy to that. But I think you don't have enough information to make a good decision tonight. I think you need to have those job descriptions in front of you before you vote on it. You need to see what it's going to look like before you vote on it. I feel very uncomfortable with you approving someone to take on this role without actually, and then asking the administrator to talk about it. I think the new finance committee might work together to come up with those treasurer job descriptions, give it to the whole board so you know what you're looking at before you start. And then at the same time, maybe Corinne can come up with a job description of the job that she's going to oversee. But I think that puts you in a very uncomfortable position because if you wanted to get rid of this person as treasurer, you're going to have to have a public hearing. You can't just say, please step down. You know, if she doesn't want to step down, you're going to have to bring up dirt on her. And that's not a happy situation to be in when she's also acting finance officer. It's really awkward, and it could be really ugly and very nasty. So I just think, I know, I know you've been talking about this for a while, but I do not think that you have enough information tonight to proceed with, with a final decision.
Unfortunately, we are.
Well, you can retract it, you can make a motion to withdraw.
But we have a motion on the table.
I know, but after this motion passes, you can say that you want to extend this former one until we have opportunity. You can do that.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the table.
I want to turn the fans on for the warning.
All right, so we have.
One thing I want to mention, Mary, is that it has been tradition of the town to have the treasurer and the finance officer, the single person, just to reduce staffing. And it's true, you'd have to go through a hearing if you, she didn't mind being terminated and we had to for cause, and we did that with Barbara Pearson. So it is ugly, but I've never seen us go there for a treasurer.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table for the town administrator to review the duties of the treasurer and the finance officer. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is Resolution 10-2022, appointment of officer. Can we get a motion? Yes.
Make a motion to the town administrator and town clerk, be two different people.
All right, you have a second?
I'll second it. I really have the trouble hearing.
I know, we nearly need to have the speakers fixed because they complain our way, but you guys can't get it. I'll try to speak louder.
Yeah, a lot of interference in this one.
I'm trying to fix it, we don't have any, we don't have any sound online right now. Anybody who's watching at home, I'm messing with things and trying to fix those.
Are we recording?
The video is recorded, but we, we should have sound.
Okay.
So the reason I made that motion is that it's been seconded.
Okay.
By me, correct?
Did I second?
No.
I don't think I did.
I seconded.
I seconded. I will second. Sorry.
Okay. The reason I made that is that whenever, we've had the town where we've taken the same, two jobs and put them in the same person multiple times, and every time it failed. All right. We had Scott Leon be chief of police as well as director of Public Works, and just he could not do the Public Works job. Took me eighteen months to get a bypass on a half-minute gal tank, which freed up over a hundred taps for the town. It should have been done in three months. We had Neil Schreidman try to be both mayor and a town manager, and the town lost $400,000 because there was insufficient oversight when Kristin Chesnut was ripped us off. So I don't think it's good to have, it's not fair to Corinne to do that, for one thing, because now by giving her two positions and you've just put two targets on her back, so she's going to end up getting more flack from the public because she has now two persona, each of which can make a mistake. I think the best thing to do would be to actually split those into two people. The other part of it is, when you have two different people, you have two different sets of eyes. In other words, if the administrator makes a mistake, the clerk can say, hey, you missed something here, or if the clerk makes a mistake, the administrator can step in and say, hey, you missed something here. But with just one person, all the responsibility and all the blame focuses in on one person.
Okay.
Yes, if I could add one thing, because I did bring this up at another meeting, I just wanted to point out, in Corinne's interim, interim review date of July 27, 2021, several points were highlighted. One of them was a recognition that the town administrator is still in two jobs and the workload is too much. So I just want to say, this is not the first time it's been brought up, that was July 2021.
Well, and actually, this was brought up approximately three meetings ago, it was voted down.
Well, with that, but.
Yes, that motion to separate the positions was voted down by this board.
Well, the motion actually wasn't for that, and that's why the lawyer stepped in. Motion was to split the job, not the, right?
The way my word, my.
The wording was such that the lawyer complained, and then that was voted down, but this motion is, was worded different.
Okay.
No, it is, that's why the lawyer stepped in.
No, the lawyer stepped in on the treasurer position, I would disagree with you on that one. But, and it was generally about having an employee hold a town office, and that's what he was discussing, not specific positions as for the treasurer and the clerk. But again, if we're going to split that position, that means we have to hire somebody and spend upwards of $50,000 in this budget cycle to do that. Yeah?
We still have a motion on the table?
Yes, we do.
Okay. My proposal, looking at what Corinne included in the packet, would be to appoint Corinne as clerk.
Okay.
And then have her serve as interim administrator, and what I'd like to propose is a different, a separate motion to start a search for administrator, so that we have her already at the end of her contract here with an administrator, and that keeps Corinne as clerk.
Okay, Mr. Mark, would you?
My point of order, it's my understanding that we can table the current motion and go into a second, an alternate motion, is that correct?
You know, I am not sure on that. I think we need to resolve the motion, and then if we want to make another motion, we can make another motion, but tabling it just puts it off.
So the town has suffered dysfunction for a while, and it goes way back before Corinne or you or even previous boards. And it's not just my perception of that. The DCI pointed out that we were hemorrhaging employees, we had two trustees throw up their hands and say, I'm out of here, this place is too dysfunctional for me. And so merely rubber stamping what existed before is simply going to propagate that problem. We need to start making changes.
And I would agree, but I would say too, let's do it in the budget cycle. Let's go ahead, hold this for the six months until the end of the year, and let's write it into the budget. Let's have a town clerk and a town administrator, but let's not do it precipitously. Where it's going to cost is a lot of money.
My motion does not have a timeframe on it. Right? It's simply to split those into two.
Okay.
People. So if you want to discuss the most effective way to implement that, then let's go for it.
And again, I would like to reiterate that I don't think we should wait until the end of December to be looking for an administrator. I think we should start a job search right now with a.
And I would think that you would need to have cause.
Point of order, this is a different topic.
You're correct.
Thank you.
All right. So anything else on separating the positions? Okay, anything from the public? Yes, Mr. Mark.
I want to speak to the statement, I would think you would want to have cause. The cause is you have a contract that's expiring on December 31st, and the fact that you have to give your administrator a decision by December 1st about the contract, that's cause. You have to start now. It can take months, I mean, to get candidates, to get good candidates, get the word out there. It can take months to get candidates on board. And to drag it into next year, you're going to have to be extending a contract again. And it's just this weird cycle, I've seen it. I mean, it's just been this little drip, drip, drip. Just like, get to it, make a decision. You know, I, I'm not wild about making Corinne an interim administrator, I think she would be better an interim clerk, but that's like just nitpicky, maybe. You know, maybe an interim clerk, and after a contract is over, you know, or you found that new, new administrator, you can decide at that time whether or not to extend her, reappoint her as a clerk, or currently, but that, that's nitpicky, and I don't know the legalities of interim clerk either, since it's an appointed position. But, yeah, I think you, you need to start soon with this. And I do want to remind you, you have to change a contract, and when you change a contract, I suppose you have to have some contract negotiations to see if Corinne is even interested in changing that contract. Anyway, but, yeah.
Thanks. Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second to separate the clerk and the town administrator into two separate positions.
Do I have one more comment?
Sure.
For me, the problem with saying let's separate it into two positions right now has a sense of immediacy to it. And I don't know if that was the intent, to create two different positions right now, because I don't, I find that problematic, because we are not in a position to have a clerk and an administrator separately. So that's why I'm brought up clerk now, begin the search for an administrator. Therefore, there's no, there's no additional money. We're still paying Corinne as clerk and interim, and we have the opportunity to add another, a separate, separate position through our job search, because she has a contract, and that, there's no guarantee the contract will be continued. There was never a guarantee of that. So there was always a possibility we would have to have two people to serve as clerk and administrator. So that's why I'm asking, if we were to pass this motion, what is the effect of this motion?
There's no time reference, but if you feel the motion is incomplete, why don't you make an amendment to it?
Well, say the motion again.
Okay. Motion, the town administrator and town clerk be two different people. If you want passes them.
Yeah.
On my stretch.
Thank you.
That the town administrator and the town clerk be two different people upon the hiring of an administrator at the end of Corinne's contract.
But did you want to put anything in about doing the search?
Well, yeah, that, I, I think I could do a separate motion for that. But let's, let me just say that again, does that make it clear that we intend to have two people in 2023 is essentially what this means, but for now, we have Corinne staying where she is formally as clerk, which she kind of is, but that we would begin the search for a town administrator while Corinne is clerk. So she's still doing two jobs, but we are anticipating the end of her contract when we are ready to appoint an administrator, hopefully before the end of the year. Corinne has her own question?
Yes.
Ms. Mark.
May I ask, since we're seven months away from the end of my contract, but we're having extreme conversations right now about my administrative contract, that if you would like to discuss ending my contract every year, seven months before I'm actually done doing the job, that we may do that in an executive session so I have the opportunity to speak?
Okay, so let's take your, do you want to amend that motion, or do you want to let it stand?
Well, I'd kind of like to amend it with what I said, which was that the town administrator and town clerk be two different people in, if I just said in 2023.
Yes, I would, I would do to say that.
In 2023. In twenty twenty three.
Okay. All right, do we have a second on that amendment?
Did you second it?
No, I was raising my hand to make a comment.
Okay. I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Mister.
Ah, let's see. This is, there's a lot of, one thing I'm concerned about, and I know some people don't like to follow legal advice, but I'd like to hear from Jeff Conklin about the ramifications of a decision like this. We do have a contract, and typically, if you're changing your contract, there is cause for it. I also hear the person that's involved asking us for an executive session so we can discuss it. She has a right to that, because this is in arena personnel. I would think that if Jeff was with us right now, he would suggest we go into executive session at her request.
Has to be an agenda.
Right, it does ring to be an agenda.
So it'd have to be next time around?
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Absolutely not.
Exec, I'm sorry, executive sessions do not have to be on the agenda. The board can, if a majority, well, if a super majority of the board votes to go to an executive session.
But I think too, that if we're going to do that, we need to have all the board members here. Not just some of them. So.
Can I speak to the other member?
Yes.
I think that any discussion about alteration of, there's no discussion altering, altering any contract at this point, because the amendment is for twenty twenty three, which is after the contract will expire. So you don't have to worry about that. I think that making it twenty twenty three gives us plenty of time to prepare and change our minds.
Any other discussion? Okay, anything from the public on the amendment, the two words in twenty twenty three? Okay, seeing all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, you're talking about the favor of the amendment.
Yeah, the amendment, the two words in twenty twenty three. Okay, opposed?
Nay.
Mister Valentine, did you vote?
I didn't.
Okay.
Who's still thinking?
Okay.
Nay.
Okay, so we have three ayes and two nays, is that correct? All right, so now we have a motion on the table that the clerk and town administrator be two different people in twenty twenty three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, that motion passes. All right, yes, we still need to appoint, no, clerk.
I move to go into executive session per C R S twenty four six four zero two four F to discuss personnel matters.
I'll second that.
Okay, maybe a super majority of the board, we have to have four people agree with. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nay.
That's all.
I, I.
You said aye, you have three?
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay. We are going into executive session.
Dave.
Okay, the time is.
I'll have to step up for just a minute.
Yeah.
I'll have a break. Mayor.
Right in five.
I think to make the motion and.
Well, let me, I.
She's going to do it. Give the action straight.
All right, time is now seven fifty six P M. The executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Mayor Backren, trustee Stelter, trustee Markle, trustee Weber, trustee Smith, trustee Valentine, trustee Knutson, and the town administrator Corinne Ferguson. For the record, any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. All right, hearing that, I want to say that the town administrator requested that we go into the executive session for a free and frank discussion of her position, which was had in that session. And, um, yeah, she wanted feedback from the board about her job and what she's doing. So that being said, did you want to make a brief statement, Ms. Ferguson, before we take a break?
Uh, what, what did I miss?
Oh, I just, I just stated what we basically did in the executive session, how we had a free and frank discussion, because she wanted feedback from the board about your position.
Um, yes, so what I would state is that I felt that the conversation was very useful, very helpful, very valid. I think the town has continued with good momentum moving forward and have no objection to the ending of my contract at the end of the year and remaining in the clerk position.
Okay, thank you. All right, can I get a motion for a five minute break?
We'll just take five minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, five minutes, so seven, uh, eight oh three. And I'm going to call this meeting back to order. So will the trustees please find their seats? Still at quarters, we can continue. So we still need to deal with resolution ten dash twenty twenty two appointment of officer clerk. Can I get a motion, please?
Where's your man?
Well, that's a different motion. Let's deal with the clerk position.
So I make a motion that we appoint Corinne as clerk.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion from the board? Discussion from the public? Yes, that's why.
Um, I think Corinne has a good opportunity here to be a good clerk, but I think there's a lot of training that she still needs to receive. And I hope you guys can encourage that into the future, as far as learning the significance of the statutes and how they relate to town function and ordinance and land use, even the voting process and running for elective office, because I've seen some huge mistakes. And I, I realize that she's been balancing these two jobs, but some of these things are clerk one on one that I think will need some attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Corinne as town clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, board appointment of mayor pro temp. This is up to the board to decide who they would like to be as mayor pro temp. I think Mr. Knutson has done an admirable job as mayor pro temp. I mean, it's basically read things to go into executive session and take over when I'm not here. But if somebody else would like to step up, the plan, he has expressed the opinion that he would be happy to give it up if somebody else wants it.
Since he's not here, we should appoint him.
Yeah. Well, we need it, okay.
Was there a motion to, it sounded like it was about, was that what?
Yeah, the town clerk, we're going to handle.
Was there another motion for that?
No, Dave, when Dave comes back, we'll have him do that, unless you want to do it.
Did you, did the motion happen for the town to complete the search?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, we have not done that motion.
Very well, I guess, do you want to wait on Dave?
Well, you can do it if you want, Thomas, you know.
Yeah, appropriate for Dave to do it.
There's no motion on the table, you could do it.
Yeah, Dave was done with the next.
I'm moving to wait until Dave returns to the table. Any more business?
Then let's talk to mayor pro temp.
Uh, second to that motion.
Oh, I don't think we need a motion to have.
I, I, I would think we suspend business until trustee Knutson returns.
Okay, a second.
All right, this is, this is ETA.
It, he doesn't live that far away. He went home to get his hearing. So, well, there is a second, there is a second on that motion. Well, our motion is going to die.
So what about the search for the administrator position?
Well, do you want to make a motion to that?
Yeah, I make a motion that we initiate a search for town administrator.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second then.
All right, discussion from the board?
There he is.
There he is, okay. We're talking about, Dave just made the motion about beginning a search for a town administrator.
Oh, great, was it second?
Yes, so discussion from the board, yes, Mr. Markle?
Um, I think that this is the, the opportune time. If in December, at the expiration of our administrator's contract, we want the opportunity to hire anybody else, then we need to begin the search now. So this is only appropriate and is, does not affect the administrator's contract, in my understanding, does not terminate it or have any other effect on it whatsoever.
Okay. Anything else from the board? All right, anything from the public? All right, we have a motion and a second to begin a search for town administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. Now let's go on to the mayor pro temp. Would anyone like to volunteer for this position? It's quite open.
Only if I am not voted, I will not volunteer.
Oh.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Um, you don't want it anymore?
Um, my last goal was to be mayor pro temp, and I'm already achieved.
Well, you've reached the highest goal possible. Good job, Dave, so I make a motion that Tom Markle be the mayor pro temp.
I second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is the sidewalk, Thunder Player.
I have, I have a secondary motion on that agenda item. I move to amend resolution twenty seventeen dash ten to indicate that the meeting chair shall not participate in board debate nor offer an opinion on opinion question until and unless the vote of the chair is to be counted on the question.
Which one is the resolution you're referring to? Is it the one about, is it the one at, at the agenda?
Twenty.
Yeah, it's the one, yeah.
Seventeen dash ten, uh, yeah, it's in.
Yeah, that one can be, because of the last lines in it, you can basically ignore that one anytime you want. It's, if you read the last few lines, and it says that the board can deviate from that any time.
Right, we'll amend these rules of procedure, that's what I, and so I guess I'm asking for clarification.
Okay, point, point of order, do you have a second?
Well, let's get your motion.
Well, I didn't understand the second.
Yeah, we have, we haven't gotten clarification on the motion yet, Ms. Ferguson.
I'll repeat it if you'd like.
Please do.
Okay, actually, I just closed it. Um, okay. Sorry, I want to place again.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Ferguson, I'll repeat to them that.
If, if I may, trustee Markle, only for, to save the board time, there is actually an ordinance that was passed a few years ago by the Board of Trustees that enumerates the responsibilities and the mayor's ability to speak in a meeting. And so if, my belief would be that if the board wanted to amend that ordinance with the enumerated rights, you would need to do it via ordinance, not resolution.
Okay, um, we have a reference to that one.
I think I forgot that. Is it two two twenty? I don't remember.
Oh.
That was last revised from four six.
I'm looking at.
I think that's the duties of the mayor, is what you're talking about.
Um, there is, okay, there's resolution twenty seventeen oh six that says each member shall recognize, oh, there's a couple of things. Mayor shall be responsible for the side of the meetings, etc., the individual meeting.
Okay, so I can, I can read the relative ordinance and resolution if it helps for the second.
All right, let, let's get the motion down.
My motion is to amend resolution twenty seventeen dash ten to indicate that the meeting chair shall not participate in board debate nor offer an opinion on opinion question until and unless the vote of the chair is to be counted on the question. So it's distinct from mayor, chair. And the conduct of meetings, voting, this is section two dash two dash eighty, which references the mayor. Meetings of the board trustees shall be conducted by the mayor according to the most recent version of Roberts Rules of Order. At the hour appointed in the meeting, the mayor shall be called to order, or the member shall be called to order by the mayor, by the mayor pro temp. Questions relative to the prior business in order shall be decided by the mayor without debate, subject to appeal. Any motion or resolution shall be introduced to writing if required by the mayor, as only mentioned in the conduct of meetings. For the actual resolutions, let's see, it was twenty seventeen ten. So this is ordinance of the board trustees. Town code shall be amended as follows, and essentially it's the beginning of our, our packets. The, at the hour appointed in the meeting, members shall be called. Order of business shall be set out resolution, having provision. It sets out the, let's see, there's no, there's no short version of this. It just enumerates the, I can read the whole thing, fine. Okay, if it helps. Whereas the town is a municipal corporation pursuant to the article two, section two of the municipal code, the legislative body has the power to adopt such laws as it needs proper. Conduct of meetings of the board trustees set forth on article two, section two dash two dash eighty, which I just read, of a town municipal, municipal code. And the board trustees, the town adopted town pane resolution twenty two thousand seventeen dash ten, which is this resolution, sets forth a proposed agenda and order of business of the town board trustees meeting separate from the provisions of article two, section two dash two dash eighty. Whereas for a more efficient administration management and regular meetings, the town board trustees, which is to remove the proposed agenda and manner of conduct for meetings from the town and municipal code and have scheduled meetings for the town board trustees governed by resolution. Now, therefore, be ordained by the board trustees, the town of Peonia. The recital status ordinance are adopted as filed with the board trustees in support of its enactment. Town code shall be amended as follows. At the hour appointed for reading, the members shall be called to order by the mayor, ordered if his order absents by the mayor pro temp. The town clerk shall proceed to call the role, note the absenteeism, announce whether the court is present. If the court is present, the board trustees shall proceed to the business for it. Order of business for the board trustees. Meeting for the town shall be set out resolution as adopted by the board. If any provisions, severability clause, existing ordinance are reviewed by refusals, et cetera, effective thirty days. So I, I thought that this was the most appropriate, easiest way to have a rule set forth to restrict the chair's input on questions before the board. Anybody care to second the motion?
I'll second it for, for see, oh, the name.
See, there's just, yes, Mr. Knutson.
Um, I've heard of the two mayors. And in both cases of the mayors, I believe that the being mayor and the interaction of the staff brings a lot of information that we as individual trustees do not have privilege. Therefore, I'm always dying to be with the mayor. Totally against restricting the mayor as one of our fellow trustees in my opinion. She is not, or he is not, a neutral facilitator. The mayor acts as a member of the board trustees. I'd like to hear their, their perspective and their opinions before I cast my vote. I don't want to restrict it in any way, so I will be voting against this motion.
And you think? Mister Valentine?
The mayor is a trustee. So what, what do you see we gain from this?
Okay, um, point of fact, the mayor is not a trustee, the mayor's a board member, but not a trustee. So I think that I also, my experiences with the past two mayors, I see frequently, almost every time, the previous mayor would insert their opinion in every matter that came before the board at that. And I see it happen quite a bit, actually happened several times this meeting, where our chair sees fit to interject any opinion, often before a second is even made. And this is something I've brought up in the past, not only does it take time, but just as good citizens and good people, we follow direction of our leaders, wherever they come from. And if I want to be a good citizen, I will follow the rules. If our chair indicates that they wish us to decide a matter or give us an opinion, not only is it a waste of time for taking a vote, but. If our chair indicates that they wish us to decide a matter or give us an opinion, um, not only is it a waste of time, um, for taking a vote, um, but it produces any neutrality on the issue. If we want to have good decision making, we need to listen to ourselves, to our parts, and what we know. And granted, the mayor may have pretty information that we don't have, but that can be stated as a matter of fact rather than opinion, and should be. Um, you'll note that, uh, specifically, uh, in a motion, I say, uh, shall not participate in board debate nor offer an opinion, right? And Roberts Rules is very clear on this. Um, I can read you, there's several citations that are included in there, um, I scared you since I've read so much to get here, but it's very clear that when a chair indicates how they want, when they produce neutrality on an issue, it's the board that reduces respect for the position of the chair itself. So I think, um, if, well, I suppose, okay, I'm here for them now, right? So if I'm running a meeting, I will never offer my opinion on any matter that is before the board, even if I, as a trustee, right, I know that David did this, um, when you ran a meeting, uh, several weeks ago last month, I guess. Um, I will recuse myself from voting, uh, no.
You are allowed to vote.
I don't, I don't allow it, I think that, I, I, I understand that, but as a matter of principle, I think it is wrong for the chair to taint the discussion.
There's a shall here. It's a shall. Yeah. Any other discussion from the board? Well, as long as I still have an opinion.
Or can still speak.
And still speak.
Last chance, Mary. Yeah, you better speak now, you're going to hold your peace.
Um, you know, again, Roberts Rules of Order does make exception for boards, small boards, and it specifically gives the mayor a lot of power that, um, larger boards don't yet. And, but this board has not taken the opinion that we, like, I can't, I won't make motions. I will let other people make motions. I only vote time of the time, which means that the only power that you guys have is from giving me any power. If you listen to my opinion and it sways what you think, then vote that way. If it doesn't, it doesn't. I'm just another member of the board. That's all I am. The powers invested in me are very, very few, and I have a First Amendment right, just like everybody sitting in this room has a First Amendment right. And as long as I exercise that right in a respectful manner, following the rules, then I see no reason why I should not be allowed to express my opinion. Any other discussion from the board? Let's see if anybody else has something to say.
I don't see that, um, the chair has any influence over a vote, other than convincing somebody with a good argument. And I don't see that this really is a, an issue. It shouldn't be an issue. Um, we should work together and if not, um, follow somebody's opinion, at least listen to their opinion and have heard.
Anyone else? Yes.
Did I usurp anyone else? So a couple things. First of all, if you have information that we don't have, and you can get it in the packet, please put it in the packet, because that was Dana Levesque's thing, was no trustee should know more than other trustees, which isn't possible in every potential situation, but I would ask that if you have things that you could get in the agenda packet, please, please put it there for all in the public to see. Um, and my other, uh, I have seen you shut down some discussion previously as a, as a citizen. Um, I have enough, uh, I will call a point of order if I see you do that again. And I feel like as a trustee, I can do that. And I am not prepared to simply swot you having any input, but I will be speaking up if I feel like it's inappropriate and you're trying to tell me I don't know what I'm talking about, for whatever reason. But you, you definitely, I watched you stifle discussion amongst the board. And if I, and I, I'm not gonna, I will not vote for this, but I will be, um, calling points of order when I believe so, just because, okay. And one last thing, in your motion, um, there's a mayor's report, so that of course was not, you didn't consider the mayor's report to be out of, for the mayor to be able to give her report. That was not part of it. Yours is just for the debate.
Right, yeah.
And so, I will leave it at that. I will vote against this motion, but I will be speaking up if I feel like, um, I'm being, we'll be the little, please do.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Markle.
Um, well, it sounds like this is probably not going to pass, but, um, I will read you from Roberts Rules. Um, the chairman sometimes calls a member to the chair and takes part in the debate, and in Roberts Rules, uh, to Mary's point, she has a right to speak. Everybody, any person has a right to speak, in Payonia apparently uniquely, on any matter, because we have public, uh, input on every motion. So the proper procedure, as I see it, would be to languish the, the gavel or languish the chair and join the public, state your, um, state your case, because that removes you from the elevated position of chair and, um, allows you to speak. Uh, Roberts says this should rarely be done, and nothing can justify it in a case where much feeling is shown. There's liability, uh, and there's liability to difficulty in preserving order. If the chairman has even the appearance of being a partisan, he loses much of his ability to control those who are on the opposite side of the question. There is nothing to justify the unfortunate habit some chairman had of constantly speaking on questions before the assembly, even interrupting the member who has the floor. One who expects to take an active part in debate should never accept a chair, or at least should not resume the chair after having made his speech until after the pending question is disposed of. Okay, and then her footnotes here. Um, though the speaker, the chairman, may have right to speak to matters of order and be first heard, he is restrained from speaking on any other subject expected where the House have occasion for facts within his knowledge. Then he may, with their lead, on state the matter of fact, that Jefferson's Manual, section seventeen. Uh, second citation, it is a general rule in all delivered assemblies that the presiding officer shall not participate in the debate or other proceedings in any other capacity than as such officer. He is only allowed, therefore, to state matters of fact within his knowledge, to inform the assembly on points of order or the course of proceeding when called upon for that purpose or when he finds it necessary to do so, and appeals from his decision on questions of order to address the assembly in debate. It's Cushing's Manual, subsection two zero two. And to Mary's point previously, for small groups, in large boards, businesses is trans, businesses transacted the same as in society beings, but in small boards, the same formality is not necessary or mutual. The informality observed by committees, that would be like committees, um, being generally allowed, in a board meeting where there are not more than about a dozen present, which is why Mary thinks this applies to our board, for instance, it is not necessary to rise in order to make a motion, nor to wait for recognition by the chair before speaking or making a motion, nor for a motion to have a second, nor is there any limit to the number of speeches, nor does the chairman leave the chair when making a motion or discussing a question. The formalities, that's the part she left, the formalities necessary in order to transact business in a large assembly meeting or business in so small a body. Now, um, in my analysis, and I can talk about this tomorrow in the, uh, I suppose, IT committee report, um, but we spend a lot of time listening to the chair, and I think that it can be, uh, our meetings can be expedited dramatically by reducing the instances of opinion. And our decisions can be made more fair and neutral, and the will of the board can be heard without undue influence.
Anybody else? All right, anything from the public? Yes, Ms. Watson.
Um, Suzanne Watson, that was interesting hearing what Thomas Markle was reading there, the rules for the small boards, because it sounds like we're picking and choosing, or the mayor could be picking and choosing which rules she wants to follow, and that's not fair. You know, if you say I can speak because the small board says I can speak, but in Roberts, it says small boards don't have to call for recognition. I just, I just don't know who's making rules here. What I see is an ability to pick and choose, um, and it gives you an unusual power, because you're the only person that's put in this position as a chair, who can make these decisions, but you're, you're just using a mishmash of rules, and it has the appearance of benefiting you. Um, what resolution, can I ask what resolution you were referring to, um, initially?
Two thousand seventeen dash ten.
Okay, so, um, were you looking at section six, um, the last, um, um, sentence, subject to the mayor's discretion, board members shall be limited to speak two times when debating an item on the agenda, um, making a motion, asking for, are not counted as speaking in a debate. So what I'm seeing there is if it's subject to the mayor's discretion, they can decide that, well, I don't need to speak too much on that, so I can limit discussion for the board, but if they think they want to speak a lot, and, and that's where it becomes unfair, is because you've got these, um, powers and abilities that none of the other board are granted, and then you can use them to your advantage. Um, I think the last mayor, who was Charles Stork, we would call it pontificating on every single topic, and it would make, and he'd say things in three different ways. And I think you've, um, the current mayor, um, thanked Charles for teaching her the job, because that's where she learned how to be a mayor. I think that was a speech in the beginning. And I think that tradition of pontification has kind of stuck with the position, and I think it's dangerous. Um, the mayor also has the ability to set the agenda, and they can keep things off the agenda. They have this unusual, um, this un, unusual ability to almost censor what gets put in front of the board. And so when they can also pontificate a lot and opine on things, um, I think, and, and there are also the desiderum who gets to speak, I think there's an element of unfairness and, um, a little bit like, you know, having Julius Caesar up there at the front of the room, and I, it makes me very, very uncomfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Jackson.
Thanks, Michelle Patterson, Second Street. I, I will say that I personally have felt stifled, um, by the mayor, but I do not think that's a problem unique to this board or unique to our previous board, even, I think it's a fairly common problem in, um, board meetings for something like that to happen. It's uncomfortable, and I would like to see that change. An equal, sorry, I'm not at all prepared for this, but I felt like I needed to speak to you. An equal problem in my opinion is that when the mayor, or when any chair, is very focused on the discussion and following the discussion and keeping their opinions in their head and, um, participating in the discussion, it becomes much more difficult to run an effective meeting where you have board comment, and you make sure everyone on the board is heard, and then you have public comment, and you make sure that the public is given equal time to give their opinion. Instead, what I've observed, not only with this board, but especially with this board, is that if it's a topic with high emotion, it tends to become chaotic really quickly, because I think what happens is the chair is very focused on what the chair wants to say, and not so much focused on keeping order in the meeting, and making sure that things are done in the order they're supposed to be, and that everyone else is heard. So, I don't know the solution. I, I understand not wanting to shut down the mayor entirely here, and I think that there have been times when mayor has really provided ways to discussions, but I think there's also a great risk there. And I would go back to what I suggested a year ago, two years ago, which Suzanne Watson has also suggested, which is bring in a parliamentarian that can run a meeting or several meetings for the board, and everyone can see what it's supposed to look like, or the meeting is run very smoothly and managed by someone with that kind of experience. I just think that would be a nice perspective and maybe give a better idea of what kind of input might be appropriate.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second, and forgive me if I get the far end of this wrong, Thomas. Um, the, we have a motion that...
God, can you hear that? One person's listening.
Yeah, but according to Resolution twenty-seven-ten, the chair not participate in board debate unless, nor offer an opinion unless a question...
Uh, the motion was to amend Resolution twenty seventeen dash ten to indicate that the meeting chair shall not participate in board debate nor offer an opinion on a pending question until and unless the vote of the chair is to be counted on the question.
Okay, thank you. All right. All in favor?
And I do want to make sure that you understand, um, that this does not preclude you from offering an opinion if you were to vote.
Okay, thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion fails. All right, next, next on our agenda, which I have...
Can I probably do a follow-up motion?
Yeah.
If I can. It's not agendaized, but...
Well, it depends on what you're gonna vote on.
Well, I was going to make a motion that we find a parliamentarian to run two of our meetings in September.
I think we need to put that in the budget.
Okay.
All right. Next, we have the sidewalk.
Give me one second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Here we go.
Okay, so this is precisely what I was talking about.
And that is not offering my opinion, but, all right, so we have a motion and a second to hire a parliamentarian to run a couple of our meetings, discussion from the board.
And I said in September.
Fine, and still, it's those budget years.
Right, but my motion is, I want to make sure it's clear, to hire a parliamentarian to step in and run our two meetings in September.
Okay.
So, just so we have time.
Do I have a motion and a second? All right, discussion from the board.
Is it in the vice?
No.
Okay. So I, I don't think I could have scripted a better illustration of what I was talking about. Thank you, man.
Which is why I said, wait.
Yep.
Wait.
All right. No discussion from the board. All right. Discussion from the public, yes, is what.
I'm very in favor of, um, doing something like this. I think it would be very instructive for you, very instructive for the audience, because we're looking at future board members out here in the audience, too. And, um, as far as not being in the budget, there are a hell of a lot of things that haven't been in the budget that have just happened this year. Tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars that still haven't been brought before the board, that have just been done. So don't, I don't think that flies. However, I, I do, I, I do want you to consider doing this, and I want you to vote for something like this, but I want you to think of when is the most practical time to do this? Um, what will you be doing in September? Um, I, I really support this motion, but is this going to be really fraught with budget meetings at the time? And perhaps, um, I'm not saying it has to be in the budget, but what I'm saying is, um, is the best time maybe in December, after some of the rush? So I would hope that you would vote for something like this, but I would like you to consider when the best time is that you're most receptive to learning. And I certainly would love to see this happen, um, as an audience member. So, just, just to ask, and I'm very supportive of this, but, um, I hope you would just say no, but I hope you can think about practicality and, and, um, negotiate something that works. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Markle.
Move to amend the motion, uh, to investigate the costs.
Okay, yep. Well, it seems like that's an entirely different motion.
Let me, I would like to withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
To do exact, because I was gonna do it right there.
All right.
And I would like to suggest that we put it in the budget for next year and possibly do it in January. I know it's a long leg, but that's after the budget crush, and budget really hammers us. We're gonna be doing nothing but budget from probably the end of August till end of summer, and it's intense, and, and we need to get it done. And to bring somebody in that isn't in the mix, isn't in the process, would possibly inject more chaos than it would help. Running the meeting is one thing, but with the subject matter, I think the institutional memory is really important.
Motion's...
That motion is received.
Okay. I move that we price out hiring a parliamentarian to chair a meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Second. Discussion from the board.
It could be an interesting experiment to try, but you're right, we don't want to step on the difficult subjects.
There's always gonna be some kind of contention, and in January, I think that's a good time, because there, there will be something coming up in January. And I, again, we're probably hiring a minister, we'll have a new administrator, and it would be a good time to try a meeting.
Anything else from the board?
So, the motion was to price it out.
Right, price out a position to run it.
Okay, right. Um, so, uh, this could be a special meeting, you know, uh, could be uh, a meeting specific to, um, meeting procedure, you know, we can, we don't have to necessarily have a really big budget to do this. It may be less expensive than we think. Um, and I also have her second hand that other communities in our area have done this and found it to be extremely helpful.
Anything else from the board? All right, the public, yes, Ms. Ferguson.
So, I, I do appreciate trustee Snyder's awareness of what budget season is likely to look like, but I would argue that that might be the best time to have a parliamentarian and someone who does not have powers in that race and can be a neutral person to just run the meeting. And that would also free up the mayor to participate in the budget session as she sees fit and with her knowledge of what's going on. Well, having someone here that can just focus on running the meeting, I think that would be a perfect time to do it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Ms. Mark?
So, just to reiterate, it sounds like the motion isn't to decide whether or not to do it. The motion right now is to decide just to price it out and, um, give us the options. Thanks.
All right, anything else? All right, we have a motion to price out a person to run the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes.
And I have an additional motion. This is because I would like to make a motion that I will do the research to determine what it will cost to get a parliamentarian.
Okay, so, all right.
I'm just gonna talk to you and do it.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
But I don't think we need a motion.
Oh, I just volunteered to do it.
Yeah, just volunteer.
We don't have any committees set up yet.
Right.
To volunteer.
Okay, so can we move on to the sidewalk repair plan? So, I believe the town administrator has requested that we keep our sidewalk repair money. We usually do it every other year, but that we hold off for a year so we can accumulate our money and be able to do more sidewalks.
Yeah, so I moved that we postpone the sidewalk replacement to next year.
I'll say that in a second. Any discussion?
My, my reason for this is there's also mobilization costs, so if you bulk it up and do it like every third year, we might be able to get a little bit more done.
Mr. Mark?
Okay, um, so just so I'm clear, the logic is that because the upfront cost is high, we want to buy a larger portion to offset that upfront cost, correct?
That's a piece of it, yes.
Okay, is it, what, what's the other piece?
The other piece is just having the cost of cement currently, the amount of money that we have in the sidewalk fund, which is only six, sixty thousand dollars, which doesn't buy a lot of sidewalks. And that if we can get another thirty-three thousand dollars in there, that puts us close to a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so, but it's the same thing, it's like basically you want to do a bigger buy because the upfront cost is so high.
Right.
Okay, so I think this is probably kind of the same principle as like an ATM, where you take out two hundred bucks or a hundred bucks at a time, instead of twenty bucks at a time, five times, so that you don't have to pay that upfront fee five times. So, because it's a bigger, okay.
Do you want to say something, Ms. Ferguson?
Well, I just wanted to add that this wasn't only so that we had more money to pour concrete, it's also because we've been actively participating with, um, the tree board and other entities about, about having discussions about alternative methods for sidewalks, um, that are less impactful on the trees. That's been ongoing conversation at the board level and in the community as well. And it allows, um, those conversations to continue as well, so that we can take that into consideration, because it's very limited if you're, if you're only thinking concrete and you're only thinking in relation to trees, it's pretty limited what your, what your options are there. So, that was the other reason. It's not just the dollar, it was also to investigate alternatives.
Anything else from the board?
The, uh, money is restricted, too, so it's not gonna lead the way. So, it will continue to continue.
Ms. Mark?
I'm wondering how this fits in in a liability sense. There's some pretty dangerous sidewalks around town, and some things that I think could just be sidewalk planned, you know, some of the high points taken off, some small areas. I'm uncomfortable because the sidewalk work I've seen done are like massive, like sections being replaced, and I think we need to be doing a little bit more patchwork. I don't think we have enough, we're ever gonna have enough money to make brand-new sidewalks everywhere. So, if you just took out a few sections here and there, that were the most dangerous, and started attending to some of it instead of kicking the ball down the road, do you really think concrete's gonna be cheaper next year? I mean, I thought metal roofing was gonna be cheaper after it was started to go up two years ago. Well, it certainly hasn't been. It's become almost unaffordable at this point. Um, and then I'm wondering as far as liability, by having this sidewalk fund and taking on the responsibility for the repair, has the town taken on the liability? So, if someone tripped on a sidewalk and busted out their front teeth, is that the town's fault at this point? If there was a sidewalk that was obviously dangerous, or even one little section, why is the town waiting so they can do a big old repair when they could just do some precision surgical work around town? I think it's really important to still be trying to chip away around the edges. It's like trying to weed a bideweed patch. Oh, well, maybe in three years I can spray the whole thing and it'll all go away. No, sometimes you have to keep working at it, you have to keep working at it. Maybe you're not spending all the money, but you're spending a little bit, doing the most critical repairs at this point in time. Because when you think about it, is it really worth someone's burnt teeth? I mean, is it worth someone's broken hip just so the town can save enough, save some money? I mean, think about what you're doing here. Thanks. I hope you can still keep doing small amounts of sidewalk work instead of just canning everything.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second, two more.
Just one quick thing.
Oh, I am sorry.
That's okay, I was behind the thing. Um, so, it started in twenty fourteen, and it would be so nice to see a table, just like what happened and the streets that were done, and how much was, you know, cost that year, and then what's left. That would be so really good to see a table. Thanks.
All right, anything else? Yes, Ms. Ferguson?
Trustee Mark, this is Hannah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I can make a search for that.
Okay.
Well, I would, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Captain?
Well, I have to look at a report here called the SGM, is Asset Inventory Capital Improvement Plan, rather than visually figuring out what sidewalks are wrong. We already have an asset inventory that tells us which ones are dangerous. So, you know, to work to fix those ones in the wreck, we should look at those and make a decision. But otherwise, if they're saying they're in good or fair condition, then, you know, who can I? So, I would suggest that each trustee kind of look at the asset inventory and do a little bit of homework before the next meeting and see what you think. If you're a professional, it's a pair of sidewalks.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, too, and I didn't know if they went down to small scale. So, but I was thinking the same thing.
I was looking at it at small scale.
Yeah, they don't, they do it by blocks. Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
So, um, for additional clarification, the board had made a motion earlier in the year that an RFP be put out to do the full sidewalk, um, project for twenty twenty-two, because we have been doing those every, um, even year, every two years. And so, specifically in the agenda, the request is postponement, a postponement of that sidewalk replacement project, other than small repairs for safety and accessibility due to significant increases in cost of materials, fuel, those things as well, and to continue discussion and evaluation with the tree board of alternative material options for sidewalk replacement that better protect trees that are not in immediate danger of removal.
Thank you.
So that if this is the larger project and publishing an RFP and hiring, smaller projects, um, can be completed in-house and, and happen and will continue to be done.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mark? All right. We have a motion and a second to, uh... No. Motion and a second to delay, uh, repairing the sidewalks until twenty, for twenty twenty-two until twenty twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Yes, Mr. Mark?
Uh, I move that we direct staff to investigate, uh, finding a concrete grinder to address problems sidewalks.
Okay, do I have a second? Second. Discussion from the board?
This is something that I investigated years back, and I'm pretty sure it was like something like seven thousand dollars for one of these machines. Um, and there, it's a giant, like, uh, like a walk-behind grinder, almost like a floor polisher, that has a diamond wheel on the front, and you can take off like a couple inches of sidewalk, so we could find these really like, the trip hazards, the, the bad ones, and double those topsoil for a lot less money than it would cost to pull up and do a, a section of them. Now, prices probably have changed, so I think it's appropriate to look back into this and see what we can find, what the operational costs of the land be, and just do the kind of the cost-benefit analysis versus the new course.
Other discussion from the board?
I have some experience with that machine. Um, basically, every place I've ever worked with, that machine, we leased it. We used it for six months or a year, and because the wear and tear on that machine is immense, and we wouldn't use it that much. I mean, probably a month, and then you're done. Just hit it hard and go. And that's the way to go with it, lease it. Buying it outright, we've got maintenance costs, we've got training costs to get our guys up and running. If we rent it, the guy that rents it trains the personnel to go run it. And probably have to go to Colorado Springs or Denver to rent it, but there it is.
Modifying the motion rather than first acquire.
Okay.
That's a good, that's a good way to put it.
All right. Do we have a second on the acquire?
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Voting on the addition of acquire instead of purchase, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, we have a motion to direct staff to investigate the acquisition of a concrete grinder. All in favor? Yeah, probably not.
Probably not.
Yeah, just modification. Are, all in favor of the modification?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. Now, back to the main motion. About directing staff to investigate acquiring a concrete grinder.
Start a group.
Now, we have to vote.
Is anyone else interested?
So, we have to vote on the acquire versus purchase, and then we can vote on the whole thing, so we just finished with the acquire thing. Now we vote on the whole thing. Yes, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of appointment of chief of police. Ms. Ferguson, would you like to explain your, uh, process in all of this, please?
Okay, so, uh, a short, a brief summary was included in the packet. So, um, September of last year, the board passed a motion to hire a recruiter, um, to help with the hiring process for the chief. Um, and so, we went through a, let me see here, um, November ninth, twenty twenty-one, the board passed a motion, um, to remove the prohibition on the town adminis, uh, town administrator management of the chief of police from the administrator contract and attachment. At the regular meeting, November twenty-third, the board passed the motion to accept Chris Lowe with governmental professional solutions, um, to provide that professional search service. And they also approved trustee Knutson to participate in the process. Um, through that process, there was a, a default, the process was long as far as defining the goals and, and speaking with the community and the board members on what they were looking for in a chief of police, what the criteria, the main criteria for evaluation of the applications. Uh, Mr. Lowe was on-site in March of this year, met with board members and community members also to get information, uh, about what they were looking for in a chief of police, and finalize the, uh, basically the brochure that was provided to multiple entities throughout the state and the nation. It was a nationwide search for applicants. Uh, and we received eleven applications, uh, well, government process solutions, received eleven applications. And based on the information that was provided by the board and the community on what the name values and, uh, outcomes for a chief were, they narrowed that down to a smaller group. Those applications were reviewed at, and during that time, while all this was happening on the, on that side of it with the recruitment firm in-house, the town was down to only at one point two officers in the police department. And through a series of hires for the sergeant position and, uh, the, for another supervisory position, we called it the corporal position, um, we had an applicant who came in to work for the town who decided that they also were interested in applying. So, we had, that candidate went through the complete process of being interviewed by GPS rated based on the approved, um, rate sheet that was identified and approved by the board, uh, through their conversation. And they went through that process, we reviewed what the finalist, and then the finalist came to the town of Kapania for interviews in-house. Four candidates were invited to participate in the two-day event, and three candidates ultimately participated. The onsite interviewing process was, the first day, the applicants toured facilities, toured the town, went to some events, spent the day in town, just getting to know the town itself. And the second day, they, uh, participated in three-step process, one step being a panel interview, the second process being a, um, an inbox scenario. They had to work a scenario that they weren't privileged to ahead of time. It was provided by outside individuals. Um, it was, that scenario was done by Chris Lowe, as well as, um, the chief of police from Hatchkins. Uh, and the, then there was also a one-on-one interview with me as the administrator, followed up that evening by a community open house for community members to come. Through the three-step process, um, the candidate that I recommended to the board, um, came, was top-ranked in two of the three processes. Um, and ultimately, and I hope I did any questions, I'm sure I'm missing things, it's been a long, a long day. Um, so they were interviewed and evaluated on several, several different criteria, including education, um, and experience. And the, uh, with the in-house knowledge that I also have of the longevity experience, knowledge, and certificates and such of the support staff in the police department, is why I made the recommendation as stated in code, um, that the, um, town administrator shall appoint, the board trustees upon the recommendation of the town administrator shall appoint a chief of police, who shall be the head of the police department. And so, my recommendation to the board is that they approve the offer of chief of police to manage a department. With that being said, I would also like to state publicly and for the board, because this is a board ratifying my recommendation to you, um, is that I'm very aware of the lack of experience component, which is the one area that was of most concern going through this process. And so, the offer that has been made is not to move immediately into the chief of police position, but to operate, um, I don't wanna say as an interim, interim, but similar to the way that Chief Ferguson operated prior to his appointment, where he will be the interim chief of police for the police department, have all rights and responsibilities, while he completes a process that has been outlined with him, um, which has three, six, nine-month goals. At any time throughout the process, should he meet those goals, um, because of some of those are self-led goals, um, he could then be, move into that chief position, but... But part of that is not only the administrator side, but the group side. So there is logging hours and being very active in the day-to-day operations of law enforcement, such as citations, community policing, community engagement, going to lower-based crimes and incidents, higher-based crimes and incidents as well. With that, I'm open to any and all questions. Thank you, ma'am.
Questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Merkel?
Could we see the qualifications and history of the possible candidates? Because I haven't seen anything, I talked to the guys, but I've seen absolutely nothing as far as material regarding their qualifications, history, or anything about them.
And the reason for that is that all conversation and direction given to staff, given to me when it came to this position and conversations with the board is that, and with the way that it was done previously, is that the board appoints based on the recommendation of the administrator. I do all of that background work and look at all of that information in tandem with the recruiter. We don't go through the entire process and then give all of that information to the board and have the board then go through that entire process of reviewing and evaluating their application and resumes as well. So that's why those were not provided.
I personally can't approve someone that I haven't actually seen a resume on. I mean, you're asking me to fly with no data. So I would abstain from this vote, just because I am not qualified to make this decision. Kind of hoping, I understand why you might not have put resumes into the public packet, but they could have been put in our boxes or emailed to us separately so we could actually review the potential candidates ourselves. And therefore make a qualified approval.
Mr. Bell, can I, or?
No.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Merkel?
Well, I guess I would ask, what was it about your in-house candidate who now has his, has employment goals that made him the superior candidate to the two others that were here?
It was, first, it was the process that they went through onsite. It's the fact that there is the commitment to the community. This person's already in the community, invested in the community and has been and will continue to be. And the, through the process and interviews with the other candidates, that was not necessarily the case. This was not a long-term goal for the other candidates.
Yes, thank you.
There was a highlighting committee besides yourself that interviewed?
That's right.
Could you tell, tell us who they were?
It was all staff members. It was the clerk for the police department, the finance assistant, and the other, oh my gosh. Oh, sorry, public works director Cory Heineger.
Were there any other law enforcement agencies involved in the selection process?
They were involved in the inbox during, for the actual scenario that they ran through an actual criminal scenario.
So those people evaluated the candidates and who came out?
The in-house officer, Lanier, came out as the number one candidate and two other.
I think what we're asked for is board is not to get into the weeds here. We trust people in staff positions to make wise decisions on behalf of the town. So I will leave you with your recommendation.
Mr. Stelter?
I have nothing to add to that.
Traditionally, personnel would be involved too. So there'd actually be trustees in the loop, but there weren't this time. Because we don't have a personnel committee to handle.
You are correct. And so the trustee that was appointed by the board to participate, participated, reviewed all applications, reviewed all. But the board took that away. What he did, he has seen everything. Your trustee that was appointed saw everything.
Just so unclear. The selection committee was you? Sarah?
Samara.
Samara? Sorry, Sam. Join Catherine and?
Cory Heineger.
And Cory.
The chief of police from Hotchkiss and Neil.
The chief of police of Hotchkiss, your husband.
My husband is not the chief of police of Hotchkiss.
Mr. Scott.
Your husband's boss. So your husband's boss, your best friend, you and Cory Heineger, who is the father of an ex-officer who now works for your husband. Is this, am I inaccurate?
No, but the, but the tone that's placed behind is completely unvalid.
I'm just trying to make sure that I understand the connections of everybody who was involved in making this decision. And the board has been given no information about the candidate that was agreed, that you suggested.
The board assigned a trustee to participate on behalf of the board.
The board's a little, okay.
Yes, but trustee Knutson wasn't part of anything other than seeing resumes.
He was not part?
Right?
Right. And, and the interviews.
Oh, you didn't say that.
And he saw all of it. The only part he did not participate was in the interview process because he's not in town during the time I was in town.
Interviews are the least, least valid selection process we can use because your natural bias is to make, make good decisions. So looking at objective factors, certainly the best thing. I put more weight on an in-basket exercise than I do on any of you, you know, my experience. And I hired law enforcement officers for six years.
And I can share that the in-basket exercise with no knowledge was an active shooter situation. And the officer candidate with the least amount of experience ranked higher than any of the officers with the experience, with your longevity experience working in police, in a police force. And that was ranked by the recruiter and a chief of police. I was not privileged or part of that scenario.
So would Officer Chief Heineger, would you start coming to the meetings?
Lanier, yes.
I mean Lanier, sorry.
Yes, he was.
So like Neil did, so we will have an opportunity to ask him questions and get to know him.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think that's important that he be here.
Yes, he will.
Do you anticipate he will provide any additional information than what we currently get in the packets with the blocker and that other form that says what they've been doing?
Yes, he writes that form. He is the one that has been performing that function. And yes, he can be here, he will be able to provide you additional information.
So the other thing, I, this, it's a little, this is a little uncomfortable for me as well. And because of you've already made an offer before you came to us, you know, and then added these employment caveats, the employment goals. So I don't know if we're in a position to ask you to give us updates on his achievement of those employment goals.
I can ask to see the live updates.
That's in our purview. But I feel like it'd be nice to know, since you hired someone that has, obviously has more, needs to do more things.
Yes.
To leave your ultimate expectation or the expectation of, of the, all the paperwork that went out with GPS. I mean, it's, I, I'm just disappointed that we went through all this and we end up with a local person who has to do a lot of training in order to be police chief. I was hoping, I mean, a lot of your goals, whatever the local board's goals are. So I'm just concerned about those employment goals. And if he doesn't meet them, where are we?
Yes, Mr. Ferguson?
I'll try to calm myself down where I speak.
Okay.
I've been working in human resources for a while. And I've seen a number of employment processes. And I was also involved in the decision about whether we should just go ahead and hire the internal candidate who looked pretty damn good and whether we should waste money on bringing these external candidates back. One thing I've been saying, I've been involved in the town since 2010 in various capacities in hiring. And I watched our recruiting things. And every time we've hired a recruiter, every time we've tried to bring outside candidates in, because of who we are and our size and salaries we can offer, we end up getting two types of candidates. Either they had major problems on their places that they worked and they were thrown out on their ear, or they're near the end of their career and this was like their last ditch kind of thing. And so, you know, when we look at this candidate field, we have some of that in action. And for me, I work with the longevity of the town. Having longevity positions, we have a candidate that's fairly strong here. I've met him face to face, I have a lot of confidence in him. But I feel like the process was thorough. A number of police officers were involved. And I read an article that influenced me a lot, and that was in the Grand Churton Sentinel, about the town administrator, I believe it was, who was either free up in Palisade. And she was hiring a chief of police. And the article described her, described the interaction in the board meeting. She came to the board and said, this is my recommendation. These are the five candidates I've evaluated. This is my evaluation of the candidates. This is my recommendation. They accepted it. And I thought, wow, that's really different than Peonia because we do, we're deep diving in the weeds. Every time, every time the administrator makes a decision, we want to second guess it. We want to go down in the weeds and play Monday morning quarterback with, rather than trusting that the person has the best intent and the best interest of the town. And that's what I feel is the dynamic that I'm feeling right now, is that we don't, because there's covering of the confidence of the administrator, there's a lot of questions about decisions.
I think you're a pointed border because you're, I think you're being a little too personal with the trustees and myself. There isn't a pointed border for being personal.
No, I feel like I'm being lectured.
You are being lectured.
But?
You are being lectured.
There's more tax. Yes.
This is not a personal question.
No.
So because I want, what I want to say is, if everything is, Corinne just told us tonight, I don't know if she could have put it in the packet, but she told me information that I had absolutely no idea about what had happened in the interviews and that two of the candidates did do well with the lot. That is not in the weeds. I am asking, what made you choose this person and Dave? And then I have to say, what you just described, what you said you did in anger is exactly what we need to know. So we are people representing the public.
Thank you.
And we need to make sure that when we're going with some, it has nothing to do with my confidence in Corinne. It has to do with turnover, you know, is this the right person? He has goals to be met, why is that? Those are perfectly valid questions when we have had no input other than to help with the qualifications we were looking for. And I don't know what their education levels are or anything. So, so I, I just take exception to you thinking that us asking questions and not doing a rote approval is in the weeds. I feel like I need to understand more. And I just understand more than, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Stelter?
We hire very expensive consultants and professionals. And the recruiter we hired was fairly expensive. And he went through the process along with our administrator. And now we're going to question, second guess, Monday morning quarterback, their decision at this point. The, the point to do that is while the process is going on and inject yourself with that, not ours. It's not too late, but it also needs to be done in an orderly fashion. And why should we hire people if we're not going to listen to their professional advice? We, we just ran into this last meeting. We hired somebody at a very expensive rate and then we just disregarded their advice. And it's bitten us in the ass before, it's going to do it again. I think that we go with what the, the professional has recommended in our process. We have the process, it's been gone through. Do, are doing it and rehashing this over and over again does nothing but spin us into the midnight hour. I mean, we're right in that right now.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Merkel?
I appreciate you trying to cut through this. I think that what we're doing is setting up. I really appreciate the police force in this town. It's something that was completely unexpected for me when I showed up here. And my dealings with police elsewhere have not been always reaffirming. But they have been here, which I attribute to the influence of Neil Ferguson's chief and the officers that were here and some of them that still are at that time. I think it is an incredible asset to our community when we have a police force who does their job with humility and respect and does so with, without ego. And I don't know if that's what we're dealing with here, because I haven't been given the information. I don't know these guys, except for the couple minutes that I got to talk to each other. I had no background information on them. So how can I make an informed decision? How, there was no opportunity for me to inject myself in this process or be involved in any capacity while it was going on. And that doesn't mean that I don't trust the people involved. It just means that I want to know more.
Yes, Mr. Ferguson?
I would say that I, I can accept and understand what, what the trustees that have some concern are stating, especially since they, they weren't privileged to all of the information that a board is privileged to prior to them taking the seat. And I would say that, because this process has been ongoing since last year and this board just took seat in November. So I, I do recognize that. But I would state that, again, and just reiterate that this, it's the tone of our community, what is an asset, and all of those things that trustee Merkel's pointed out, to have an attitude of humility, to want to serve your community, to be an active community policing, which were all specific guidelines that were asked from the board on to rank and rate what, what it was that they felt overall they needed in a chief of police with the resignation of the previous chief of police. And those were the things then that were taken into consideration through this process. It's always a balancing act, deciding how much information to put in and not put in at it. The reason that the board doesn't have the information when it comes to goal setting, which would happen with any of the candidates, there's specific goal sets set for this candidate based on his strengths and weaknesses, just like there would be specific goal setting for the other candidates based on what their strengths and weaknesses were. I would, I just want to state that those aren't in there because while this is a, a position that the board, due to the way that our code is written, gets to still ratify through appointment, it's a position that still is managed and under the purview of the town administrator. So those goal sheets and things like that that are very specifically designed for an individual employee are not a document that the entire board would be privileged to. And yes, typically when you have a personnel committee, the personnel committee gets a little bit more of that information. But we don't and we didn't, so that can't, I would use that as a mechanism not to move forward with the decision that was made.
Anything else from the board? Can I get a motion? No. No, we don't.
Oh, we haven't had a motion.
No, we need a motion.
Wait. Did you, did you move to a second?
No.
I'm going to have to abstain, I don't have enough information to make a qualified decision.
No, no motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of chief of police as recommended by the town administrator.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion from the board? All right, name came from the public. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah. Well, I spelt, this is moderate again, ten eighteen Third Street. I apparently sent it to the wrong address. I wish you had noticed it. I wish somebody had noticed. I wish Candy had put it in the packet like she told me she would the last time and you didn't come. I wish you wanted to know what we thought, but it appears to me you don't. And I went to the trouble to write a letter that I thought was really quite, quite conclusive. And I talked to Dave Knutson and he feels candidates are too old. I think that's very discriminatory and I don't think that should be accepted. I, I think Chris Lowe was a lousy choice. I looked him up, it was very simple. He does not look very reputable to me at all. Fifteen thousand dollars, all this time spent, and you don't even tell the council what's going on. I, I just, I'm so appalled that my town is not caring what the people think and what the council thinks, all of them. And I don't think you should abstain because I think you probably do have a good opinion. And I'm just, it's a tragedy to me because I talked about what this man was capable of. He is seasoned, he has done this for years. I think it's just wanting to get somebody in here, and I don't know if you read the letter. I don't know if you... letter, I don't know if you had the time to.
I didn't get it.
And I'm going to give it back to you, so you can possibly read it before some final idiotic decision is made, though. Thank you.
Anything else you can tell us? Yes, Ms. First.
I don't have an opinion about Officer Lamenter. I don't know him. I suspect he's, you know, a fine member of the community. But what makes me sad is, I think the process has been tainted by, you know, I don't know who you're referring to as we have to trust the professional. Who exactly is the professional? Can I have an answer on that?
The recruiter that we hired for fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes, and also Mr. Knutson, who has, what, thirty plus years of experience in this.
Okay, but you're not supposed to be acting in a professional capacity if you're a trustee. It's my opinion.
So, we have to hire a board.
Okay, so, but what I would like to say is, and I heard the whole staff was on the selection committee, and then I heard that it was only a few staff members. So, which was it? Was it the staff? Was, it was a rating of the staff, or was it just a few staff members?
The staff members that Ms. Ferguson...
Okay, so, I heard that, she says, the finance assistant. And that makes me very uncomfortable, because the finance assistant was an internal, an internal hire, wasn't even an advertised position, from what I understand, and it's a temporary position, that wasn't even budgeted for. So, what's this person doing influencing hiring decisions for a chief of police? It sounds kind of like a mess. And then there's this whole discussion about, it wasn't, that he got hired, and it wasn't, it's already been hired, and because this whole appointment thing shouldn't be happening. But the appointment was, the appointment by the board of trustees on the recommendation of the administrator was what was advertised in the whole job announcement. So, how could your administrator have missed that fact? And also, her very, her husband was hired with the same rules. So, why is that a problem now? I just think that, it's sad to me, because I think the process has been tainted by your administrative staff, who had very little experience, probably before they came here with hiring and firing, because that was not their skill set. And I'm really glad that you're looking at the process of looking into hiring a new administrator, because that's the only thing that's going to fix this problem. And I think you're probably stuck with what you have now. I think I would welcome anybody, even if it's Matt Lamenter, to the position. I'm sure he's a fine person. But this mess has got to stop. And I think this tension, it's because, finally, it's because of who you have as administrator. I'm glad you're looking at, not just extending the contract, but actually looking at people's merits as administrator before you hire them, because that was never done, and that's why we're in this problem now. Feeling like we have to hire professionals, because we don't have an administrator who can do it. That's why this outside entity was hired.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. First.
It seems a little bit, once again, the same stuff. It's not, the information was not disseminated to the entire board for them to make a good decision, and that sort of time and time again. Of course, I don't know how the process was, how Chris Lowe was decided upon as a headhunter recruiter, because honestly, all you have to do is look up his name, and you have a load of information that you would quest, makes him very questionable for anything. So, and as I hear, like, the decision has already been made, is that the case? Like, the decision to hire Matt Lamenter has already been made, is that correct? So...
It has to be ratified by the board.
And what if it's not? I mean, was he already offered the position? I don't understand. No? Was he already offered the position?
An offer of employment has been provided to Mr. Lamenter.
Oh, for two weeks?
Yes.
That's so very confusing. So, what does it matter if the people that are represented by the citizens of the town do or do not say yes to that? It's already a done deal.
The ordinance states, and so our town attorney's not here, but I spoke to him about this specifically, and he says that the ordinance states, as does in other communities, we're not the only one, that upon the recommendation of the administrator, the board shall appoint. It doesn't say upon the recommendation of the administrator after the board participates in, in a review of credentials and all of that, and all of the information that you look at when you make a decision who to hire, that then they'll appoint. It's upon the recommendation of the administrator. The board of trustees put out an RFP to hire a firm, the board of trustees...
May I call, move to call a question?
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
And we need a super majority of the board. All in favor of calling a question?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. All right, so, we have a motion in a second to approve Matt Lamenter as the chief of police, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose?
Abstain.
All right, that motion passes. All right. Last on our agenda is the new committee arrangement and description. I would suggest that...
I would suggest to extend the meeting by fifteen minutes, so we could finish this.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
No. I'm in aye.
So, we have aye, 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 we have, it passes. All right. So, I would suggest that people volunteer for these various committees, instead of the board voting on it, because, and it used to be, yeah, and it used to be that the mayor was appointed, that's the way our statute reads, so...
So, do you want to talk just a little bit? I don't want to drag this meeting down. We'd like to mention a couple of things about committees. Once upon a time, in town Peonya, we had six functional committees that made the board run much more efficiently. I'm sure that when you guys decided to vote for committees, you thought, oh, no, this is going to make more work. No, it depends upon the committee, but it generally makes less work. Six committees, two trustees per committee. The workload of the committees, the finance committee has the most work by far, because it has to meet regularly a few bills, sign the checks, and go over the bank statements and the rest of that. The water and sewer committee has the next level of work effort, just because it's an ongoing problem. And streets is probably the next one, and then public safety, parks, and personnel usually have very little to do. So, you may only get together a couple of times a year at those committees. The committees do not have regular meetings, they do not have an agenda, they do not take minutes, they are not recorded. And that's not required by law, because with two trustees, they're not considered a, you know, following the open meeting laws. And part of that was, has to do with efficiency. Nothing's hidden there, because a committee cannot make decisions. Also, I've given you two duties of the committees that I had written as I left in two thousand and twelve. And these, I asked the other committees to write themselves some duties, so we could have a set, so that we'd have some historical knowledge carrying forward, but they never have them. But these could be used as a template for creating the other committees, because like Dave, you know what's going on in finance, you could create one of these. I think it's important that the very first part of this be included, because this is how committees got into trouble before. And the purpose of the water, sewer, and trash committees to assist the mayor and town staff with water, sewer, and trash issues should be noted, that this committee is a part of the legislative branch of the town government, and therefore does not have the authority to directly manage the public works department. That job is rightfully performed by the mayor, the town manager, the director of public works, and then the rest of the duties are listed there. It's really important that, if you're on a committee, you don't tell anybody what to do. Your information gathering device, and your purpose is to create feedback to the trustees, so that they can make an informed decision. Let me give you an example of, of one that actually occurred with streets. There was an adverse possession claim upon Pan American. It wanted a boundary line adjustment for about a foot or a foot and a half, because a fence was encroaching on a neighbor, had encroached for over seven years, so it was going to be an adverse possession. The streets trustees went up and looked at the condition, saw what it was physically, because sometimes you're sitting here making decisions, but you don't even see what's on the ground. Someone's got to go and actually look at things. And then they talked to the neighbors, to make sure there wasn't going to be any dissension in the process, came back and reported back to town, didn't seem to be any problems, and recommend to the board that they actually go ahead and approve the boundary adjustment. That would be a typical duty of streets. The other duty that happens is when the mayor or the town administrator, or the head of the department, typically the mayor and town administrator, though, calls in a committee. And there's a good reason to do that, because the town administrator should realize that some subjects are going to be really ticklish. This Hayes building thing, that was really ticklish. What you should have done, if you have a streets committee, was call the streets committee in, and that way, the responsibility gets to be split. You just don't have the town administrator sitting up there, ready to be fried, because she had made a decision without any other input from a committee. And so, that splits the problem up. So, I'm not going to drag this thing out. I would like to make a motion that we assign the committees at the next meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
The sign, people get assigned, you want to do it now?
Yeah.
Okay, if you guys want to do it, we can fly with it.
Yeah.
Okay, and traditionally, the mayor has chosen people on committees. The problem with that is that the mayor would play political games with that. And so, it'd be better if the actual trustees chose their own committees than any unfulfilled positions that the mayor assigns them.
Okay, all right, well, let's start finance committee. Who would like to be on the finance committee?
I'll be on finance.
All right.
That's a tough one. If I'm going to open my mouth and do this, I'm likely to...
All right, so we have Abe Weber and Paige on finance. Who would like to be on projects?
I will.
And streets?
Sure.
Okay, John, and somebody else?
You don't have to be...
Yeah, we have, you have to do two.
Yeah, I'll be streets.
Well, if you don't want to, I can explain what the committees do.
Will...
Yeah.
The committees are...
Yeah, the committees will come up. Okay, water, sewer, trash?
I'll be on that.
Pardon?
I'll be on water. I'm a natural.
Uh, personnel?
I'll be personnel.
Okay, John and Paige, and public safety.
Public safety.
All right. All right.
Did we fill the tickets?
We did. We're all covered. Thank you, everybody.
I, I never got to speak at the end of the last one, and I just wanted to say...
Really, really, isn't it?
All right, well, we have one more thing we need to do before that. And that is, so we are asking the questions, how do we do during this meeting?
Well, you know, we get to speak on each agenda item. I want to speak on the committee agenda item, please. That's what the resolution said.
Fine, Ms. Watson?
Okay, if you talk to certain, you should not have a personnel committee, unless it's ad hoc, because of a certain situation. But standing personnel committees tend to end up in trouble, dabbling in employee matters that your hired administrator is supposed to be doing. So, that's why that is a bad idea. That being said, you need to have a resolution for each committee. If you're going to have committees, there should be a description of what exactly they do, because it tends to crumble. You guys might be aces, you might be geniuses right here, but the problem is, you're not going to be here forever. And this tends to kind of morph into something else, as, as the geniuses are gone, right? So, you need to describe it somehow, so there's like, you know, you don't get into the weeds. Anyway, so this should, I, I appreciate this being written up, but it should be formalized in the form of a resolution, I believe. And, and that would, I think that would really help things, because this is just, this is informal.
No. Part of the thing I think we need to do is, instead of running immediately to a resolution or ordinance, we need to experiment a little bit. And we need to see how this committee is going to work. I'm not guaranteed, just because it worked decades ago, it doesn't mean it's going to fly now. So, experiment with it, if it looks like it's functional, we've got to set a duties list for all the six committees, then at that time, embed it in a resolution.
Okay, and I did find, when I was on, on committees, when I was a board member, there was a lot of one-on-one directing the town administrator, kind of giving them direction. And I'm, I'm sorry, I know, we say it shouldn't happen, but it just does. When you're there in private, it's really easy to talk to people and tell them what you want them to do, or what you think, and I saw that happening. I also want to say, when I was attending the personnel committees, one of the members said that they told the contractor, this was my understanding, the cleaning contractor, that they needed a raise. Well, that's not the personnel committee's purview, to be telling contractors that they need to get more money from the town. So, I mean, there are just risky things that can happen, and behind those closed doors, is what I want to say.
In response to that, could we have, make sure that the committees meet here and do a Zoom meeting, like we do for the advisory water committee? So, then it's recorded?
A lot of the committee work is in the community. You can have those.
Oh, thank you.
A lot of committee work is in the community. It's like the streets committee is not going to meet here, they're going to meet at the actual subject that is being dealt with. It's not as, they're not as formalized as like a board meeting. They're an informal way of gathering information, or doing tasks that the mayor or the administrator has asked them. And it's just not the same with the board meeting.
Can we just say that the committee members need to do a good job of keeping notes?
So, the...
At the end of each meeting, at the end of each meeting, there's committee reports.
Which we have to get to.
Typically, for something like public safety, time after time, they'll say nothing to report. But that's the point at which, and that's the point at which they may make a motion, as well as provide information.
But I'm, I'm good with, let's just try it.
Okay, I, I agree with that. I, I do think you have to be careful, really, you're not working under the direction of the administrator, you're working under the direction of the rest of the board, who wants to task the committee to do research, something, or whatever. But then again, be careful that the committees aren't doing the staff's job, because it shouldn't be that hard to be a board member, either. You know, you shouldn't be doing jobs for the people that you hire. Thank you.
And then the other thing I would suggest, the first meeting, that you write up rules and responsibilities for the committee, just as Mr. Weber has shared with us. And then that could be part one. All right, ten minutes left. Yes, Trace.
Trace McCurry, three twenty four. I, I'm just wondering how these committees might be interacting with implementation of parts of the master plan for the parks, wrecked trails. Is that under the jurisdiction of like the parks committee? Or would it be like, oh, we need a crosswalk, therefore the streets committee takes, like, is it a case-by-case thing? Or is there some way that, you know, in the, in the master plan, usually the, the implementation is led by the town, plus some organization that is stepping up, like Conservation Center or Nature Connection or NF Tag? And I just wonder how that's going to be coordinated?
Well, I think it's a work in progress.
Yeah, and parks have usually stepped in on that one.
Right.
Because that's kind of where you're focused, although you're, wider than that.
But the crosswalks and the, and the project that we're going to do is streets. And we just kind of, you're going to have to work with it, and we have, because it's informal, it'll be slightly less structured. But we need to get the work done, and what's happening now is, we're spending a lot of time in the meetings, doing the work that two people could have gotten done in thirty minutes, and we're spending an hour and a half. And it's, it's, when you have a large group, it's hard to do anything. Get twenty people to agree where to have breakfast. That's where we get into the problem. Two people can make a, a committee work, not that we're making decisions.
I was wondering if that was being considered with the assignments that are...
To answer your question, we don't know yet. But it's, like, like Grace said, it's informal, so... But it's, like, like Rick said, it's informal, so it becomes easier to manage.
Thank you.
The input would be really...
Yeah, can I add two hand up? No, Ara.
I'll get two now. Thank you. I, I'm pretty saddened that nobody's even mentioned the whites who drove all the way from central Texas. I don't know if you've even been in touch with them. I, I think it's appalling that they take this whole whatever, takes it so lightly. And I don't think the money was wisely spent. And nobody's even brought up about Chris Lowe and his, you were gonna check, but I don't think you did. And I, he's just, his background is appalling. Five trustees in Monument threw him out unanimously. And we, we spent fifteen thousand dollars. I really believe you had made your decision before anybody came over here. And we had all this gracious meeting the candidates. I think it's just garbage, and I'm really sad my town runs like this. And I appreciate the new trustees, and I hope things are gonna change. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So quickly, how did we do this meeting?
Better, I think.
Okay.
I mean, it's still dragged out for, considering we just had a short bit of new business, it dragged out.
Yeah.
Is that a good session?
Yes.
Needed to be done.
Yeah.
I think it's hard. I mean, I know I got emotional on this, and I apologize to the trustee for that, the comments that I made if they were taking ramen and mean them in that spirit. But it's hard for each of us because we care about the town so much that we're passionate. And I, I appreciate that passion. I appreciate what Martha's telling us right now. She's, she cares about the town, and she would like to see it become better. It's really difficult to be a trustee because you're having to make decisions. And I really want to agree with them, and that's just the reality, that's the reality of being a trustee. And I think each of us, if we can come together as trustees more and take more of the bull by the horns as far as trying to make the decisions and show the public what we're trying to do, I think we'll be better off. So in this meeting, we did start moving pretty well through the beginning, but it bogged down pretty bad.
I also have to blame for that. I came in and it bogged down.
All right.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, no more meetings.
That means I have to come in late all the time.
We love to have everyone calling in every time in the meeting.
So we covered seven agenda items today with a couple of extra...
Yeah, there were several of them.
Things that popped up. I feel like it was, and actually, since we started at six, since that is six-thirty, we're three and a half hours, and it's gonna be three forty-five getting out of here. I feel like we could probably be a little bit more disciplined in our discussion. And aside from that, I kind of feel like this table, the more circular table, feels like I could communicate better, I could hear better. I do think it's, could be better being closer to the people or bringing the chairs closer this way maybe. Give people opportunity to really get up here. I know there's technical considerations. But I feel like this functionally works a little bit better than the row in the front or in the back.
Yeah, my only worry is that when we have town administrator, we've got people who have to crank around to listen to the town administrator, and she's an integral part of our discussions a lot of the times. So I think if there was a way to just push it back a little bit on the end table so that people don't have to crank their necks.
Also, Steve, I'm arguing with you on that. But I do know that Rick has a preferred side, so maybe we can do arrangements to make it so that...
My left side, my right side is dead.
Right, yeah, so maybe having him on a different place might help.
Right, okay.
This is pretty much ideal because I can hear this way and I can turn to hear otherwise. This stuff's worked for me.
Okay.
Can I just make one quick point? Because this thing is so big and clunky. I know it's good to stand here and grab it, but it's like it, it divides the room sort of. And it would be great if it was just like a plant stand to designate for something. So it would flow where everybody was involved in that.
Yeah, and it's hard to see over this, especially with the chair over here.
It's very...
It's really, like, I can't see everybody.
And so maybe it's a smaller podium or something like that, but yeah, or, I don't know.
They are... They made a chainsaw.
There you are.
Regarding plants, I need to...
Fantastic.
All right, well, I'm calling. I'm adjourned to this meeting. Thank you, everybody.
And see you tomorrow.
Yeah, see you tomorrow.